Welcome, everybody. Meeting being held in City Council chambers which are open to public attendance and participation. Meeting will also be livestream for public viewing but not participation. Police identified in the agenda. Email comments sent and received by the city clerk at least 24 hours before the meeting will be distributed to City Council prior to the meeting. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Harris. Vice Mayor Shaw.
Here.
Wow, I sound really loud. Councilmember Boomgarden. Councilmember Kirchner.
Here.
Councilmember Piscuali.
Here.
Facilities pursuant to Government Code Section 54957A, consultation with city attorney and/or UBS City Fire Chief, Police Chief, and City Manager. Do we have questions from the public? Nothing? We see nothing? What?
Dust.
Dust. And we will adjourn to closed session. You guys ready? All right. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for your patience for a little bit behind schedule. We'll try to make it up in the air, as they say. This meeting is being held in the council chambers which are open for public attendance and participation. The meeting will also be livestreamed for public viewing but not participation at the link identified in the agenda. Email comments sent and received by the city clerk at least 24 hours before the meeting were distributed to the City Council prior to the meeting. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Harris.
Here.
Vice Mayor Shaw.
Here.
Councilmember Boomgarden.
Here.
Councilmember Kirchner.
Here.
Councilmember Piscuali.
Here.
All right. Thank you. If everyone can please stand for invocation by Pastor Ron Fortenberry, UBS City PD Chaplain, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by... About Manny Cardoza.
Please join me. Great and mighty Father, thank you for the blessings that you have smiled upon us here in our city and our community. I thank you for the prosperity that we are experiencing and the safety that goes along with that. I ask, Lord, for your continued blessings on our community. I pray for the protection and health of our council members. You would keep them strong, keep them safe. I pray for the protection of our first responders. And, Father, as we come upon that terrible reminder of 9/11, I ask, Father, that you would help us never forget the preciousness and cost of our freedom. Thank you, Father, for all of our blessings. Bless our time together tonight. May you smile upon us. Amen.
Salute, pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Mr. City Attorney, do we have anything to report from closed session?
There are no important items to close session.
All right. Thank you very much. Any agenda modifications? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number one. This is September is Hunger Awareness and Action Month. I'd like to invite Maria Ball, Executive Director of the UBS Sutter Food Bank, to come forward, please. All right. Welcome, Maria. Good to have you here. This is a proclamation and recognition of Hunger Awareness and Action Month. I'll just go ahead and read this here for you. Whereas the month of September has been designated as Hunger Awareness and Action Month in UBS City to bring attention on the persistent problem of food insecurity and to mobilize a movement to help end hunger in our city. In UBS City, many households experience hunger. People frequently skip meals or eat very little, at times going without food for an entire day. Research shows that children who experience hunger have increased levels of chronic illness, anxiety, depression, and behavioral problems. Seniors with lower nutrient intake are at increased risk of disability and declining physical and mental health. According to the United States Department of Agriculture records to date, in 2024, the UBS Sutter Food Bank provided USDA food to 5,000... Excuse me, 59,672 individuals, including 16,613, to be exact, children ages 5 through 17, and 1,776 children four years and under. The UBS Sutter Food Bank and its partner agencies and pantries, apart from the USDA, provided food to an average of 32,000 people per month through more than 30 monthly food distribution events in the UBS Sutter area for a combined total of approximately 318,000 pounds of food distributed per month, making a significant improvement on the quality of life for those they serve. Very significant. So now therefore be resolved that I, Sean Harris, Mayor of the City of UBS City, and on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim September is Hunger Awareness and Action Month, and encourage the community to take action against hunger in our community, whether by monetary support, food donations, or volunteering and advocacy. Thank you very much. Would you like to say anything? All right. Go ahead.
I just wanted to thank council and staff in the City of UBS City, and of course, our community members, because you're one of our biggest supporters. And this council in particular has been a huge support to me professionally in supporting me in my role as Director of the Food Bank, and just really being there to bring the positive awareness out, because it's like a little gem. It's a little hidden gem that a lot of people don't know about. And our partner agencies, we couldn't do it without them. And I just feel like we're making a big difference. And I really appreciate all of you monetarily. You've supported the Food Bank, and you've been there, you know, had the events, and there you guys are. And I just appreciate it. I appreciate... We appreciate the support, because we are... You know, there's 12 employees at the Food Bank, and we rely heavily on community members such as yourselves. We couldn't do it without you. So, thank you so much. This... I just think this is awesome. Let's do it every year. Oh, and there's going to be orange lights on the tower, right? Okay, good. Yes, 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 yes. So, we're super excited.
There you go. Let's get a picture.
Okay. Let's do that.
We're supposed to smile. I hear that we're awfully grim.
There we go.
Hi, Council Media.
Okay. Moving on to number two, public communication. Appearance of interested citizens. You are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on action items appearing on the consent calendar for business items on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on any other items within the scope of the city's jurisdiction, including items not listed on the agenda, will be considered at this time. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Members of the public submitting written requests at least 24 hours prior to the meeting will be allotted five minutes to comment per speaker. Repetitive comments may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. If you have three minutes to speak, if we have any comments from the public? Okay. Item number two, which is this. Manny, we have you a card from you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. My name is Manny Cardoza, resident of UBS City, past City Council member, and past Vice Mayor of the City of UBS City. This is concerning the naming, the recommendation for Plaza Park on the corner of Bridge Street and Pluma Street. I would like to have Plaza Park named after Bob Barkhouse, either Bob Barkhouse Plaza or Barkhouse Plaza, whichever, as long as Barkhouse is in the name of the park. The reason for the nomination: Bob Barkhouse was a three-time mayor of the City of UBS City. He was instrumental in the planning and development of the widening of Bridge Street and the Fish Street Bridge just five years ago. For the visionary leadership, unwavering dedication, and tireless commitment to improving his beloved UBS City, there is no one more deserving of this recognition than former Mayor Barkhouse. He has exempla... Is implemented... Excuse me. Is exemplary what is means to leave a lasting legacy, making our community better for all who live here. Background: I personally witnessed Mayor Harris, Vice Mayor Shaw, and Councilmember Boomgarden publicly promise to Mrs. Barkhouse in the presence of over 200 attendees, there was probably over 250, at Mr. Barkhouse's memorial service, that they would honor Mr. Barkhouse's legacy, Mr. Barkhouse's legacy, by naming a park in UBS City after him. This promise was overlooked during the naming of Deed Ardains Park. It is time for the city to make good on the public promise of the City Council. To the ad hoc committee, please make this promise a reality to Mrs. Barkhouse. It would be a dream come true for the Barkhouse family. In closing, just gentlemen, please be men of your word, and please step up and name this park after Mr. Barkhouse. It'd be a great thing. And Councilmember Piscuali and Kirchner, I hope you'll follow the lead and make this dream come true. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you, Manny. Anybody else care to speak? All right. We will move on to consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time that council votes on the motion unless members of the City Council request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Do we have any comments from the public regarding consent calendar items three through five? All right. Seeing none, we can have a motion.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Move to approve consent calendar items three, four, and five.
Second.
Go ahead.
Thank you. You were first. I have a first by Councilmember Boomgarden, second by Vice Mayor to approve consent calendar items three through five. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously, items three, four, and five. On to business items, community sponsorships presented by Kristi Morales.
Through the mayor. I need to recuse myself due to a conflict on business item number six.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Kristi Morales. I'm here to present to you tonight the community sponsorship request for Sutter County Community Memorial Museum Association, Alliance for Hispanic Advancement, and Say Love Sutter and Uba. A little bit of background for our community sponsorship policy. It was adopted in 2019 with the intent that the public will receive some intrinsic cultural, economic, educational, or entertainment value from the event. First, I have Sutter County Community Memorial Museum Association. They are requesting a monetary sponsorship of $1,000 for their trees and tradition fundraising event that'll take place December 6. Our second request tonight is for Alliance for Hispanic Advancement, also known as AHA. AHA is requesting a sponsorship... Sorry, monetary sponsorship for 1,500 for their Primavera Ultravest event that'll take place on January 18, 2025. My last request tonight is for Say Love Sutter and Uba. Say Love is requesting a monetary sponsorship of 2,500 for their Savior Say Love fundraising event, and that'll take place September 28, 2028. Here I have a table, including the above request and all requests to date. Our account for community contributions, we have none tonight, but the budget is 20,000 and 5,000 quarterly, leaving a remaining balance of $20,000. The account we're utilizing tonight is for community events. 10,000 is the budget with 2,500 quarterly. The current balance is 10,000. For the first quarter, we have a request for Say Love for 2,500 that'll utilize the full quarter one balance. Quarter two would be for Sutter County Museum's request of 1,000, which would leave 1,500 left over in quarter two's budget. Quarter three is for AHA's request of 1,500. That would leave 1,000 in quarter three's budget. All three requests would leave a remaining balance of $5,000. The fiscal impact would be the monetary sponsorship totaling in $5,000 would come out of the community events account: 1,000 to the museum, 1,500 for AHA, and 2,500 for Say Love. Alternatives would be: one, do not authorize the monetary sponsorship request; two, approve the monetary sponsorship request with changes; or three, provide staff with alternate direction. My recommendation tonight is to consider the sponsorship requests for Sutter County Community Memorial Museum Association, Alliance for Hispanic Advancement, and Say Love. If approved, adopt A, B, and C: 1,000 for Trees and Tradition fundraiser, 1,500 for the Primavera Ultravest event, and C, 2,500 for the Savior Say Love fundraising event. Any questions?
Through the mayor. Hi. Can you put the table that you put together? That would be awesome.
Yes.
Okay. My... I guess my only question is, it looks like we're giving away half the money right now, which means that... I know it's broken up by quarters, but I guess I'm just a little concerned about if the budget is 10,000 and it's 2,500 quarterly. I don't have a problem with the Say Love request, because we're in the first quarter, but I guess I'm just struggling a little bit with...
I think it's 5,000 quarterly. I think, isn't it?
2,500 quarterly for the community events.
So where do the... Our remaining balance is 20,000. Gotcha.
That's for the community contributions.
Got... Okay. If you have it's... Gotcha.
These are all coming out of the 10,000 bucket?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
That was just my concern, is that, again, where...
I was reading it wrong.
They're all within the 2,500 or at or within the 2,500 for each quarter, but it does limit the requests for quarters. The second, three, and four are... Well, two and three at least.
Okay. Okay. Suggestions?
No, I just wanted to see the chart again.
Yeah.
I'm a visual learner. Thank you, Kristi.
I know all of those requests look familiar. I believe we've done them before. Have the... Diane, are you aware of the... Has the amount changed? Has it gone up, or...
Actually, the Say Love Savior event is... This would be the first year that we fund it, as well as we've done a sponsorship contribution to AHA. This would be the first sponsorship for this event that we've done. I also want to note that the policy says first come, first served.
Yeah.
And so, you know, these three organizations submitted their applications early on, and we did break it up. We are doing something different this year in terms of breaking it up by quarter to give council more flexibility and to be able to see, looking into the future, the applications that we've received by when the event's occurring.
I think the key there is first come, first served. Right there. Any other comment from council or the public?
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
The only comment I was gonna make, and piggyback off Diane, it's really philosophical, because we are breaking them down by quarters, but it's, do we want to... You know, as a council, do we want to charge them in the quarter that they occur? Or do we want to charge them in the quarter that they ask? And that's really, I think, our decision point of where, I think, where Mark started tonight, is which one are we comfortable with?
Yeah.
Because if we put all those together, you got $5,000 ask in this quarter, and it's allotted 2,500, which is one philosophical way. If you do what's presented, which I'm fine either way here, it's just, what's going to be our philosophical guidance going forward? Are we gonna look at when they occur or when they ask?
I would say probably makes sense to go when the event occurs. And I know Trees and Traditions is December.
Yeah.
Which is that museum one.
Yeah, I would agree that it's occurrence. I mean, they came up... So, we're doing it by quarter. So, just do it by quarter, and then you're...
You know, Kristi, that was gonna... Are you... Let me finish. I was... That was gonna be my question for... I know the Trees and Traditions for the museum, that is December, so it's the proper quarter. Is AHA's event in the quarter... Are we charging to the quarter in which the event occurs?
Yes, January.
We are.
Or 3rd.
All right. It's right in line with what you were talking about.
Yeah. Just whatever our philosophy is going to be, we just... We're good with it.
All right. I'll ask public again, just to make sure we're good. Any other comment from up here? If not, we can go with a motion.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Make a move. Make a move. Make a motion. Make a motion to adopt staff's recommendations A, B, and C for item six.
Second.
I have a first and a second to approve A, B, and C. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, unanimous. Someone please get weighed. And in the meantime, we'll move on to number seven, the revenue sharing agreement between County of Sutter and the City of UBS City.
Before I start, I just want to say congratulations to Kristi, because this was her first time presenting to council, and she did a fantastic job.
I wasn't gonna front her off like that, but you go...
I will.
You go right ahead.
She deserves the kudos. She did great.
And you know what? You did. You're sitting next to a good example right there. All four of you do well. So, five of you do well. Yeah. So, yeah.
He's a short timer.
All right. Since we cracked that seal, Kristi, congratulations. You did really well. Thank you. Many more to come, hopefully.
All right. So, the item before you is the revenue sharing agreement between the County of Sutter and the City of UBS City. So, it's something we've talked about for quite a few months now. It's something that we've worked on for quite a few months now, and so we finally have the unveiling of the proposed revenue sharing agreement. So, as we've done the informational presentations related to Measure D, the item that really stands out to folks the most is that of the current sales tax rate of 7.25%, UBS City receives 1%. And that's the Bradley Burn sales tax. To break it down further, the state receives 4% of that, which goes into the general fund. 1% goes to Sutter County, but specific to 2011 realignment. Half a percent goes to Sutter County, specific to the 1991 realignment. Half a percent goes for Prop 172 for public safety, and then 0.25% goes for transportation funds for regional transportation planning. So, of all of that, 1% goes to UBS City, which equates to approximately $18 million in 2023. So, last December, we had our Revenue Ad Hoc Committee, which was current Mayor Harris and Councilmember Boomgarden, as part of a joint study session with Sutter County, make their recommendations related to how to move forward with a revenue measure. And so, the recommendation was a general 1% sales tax, led by UBS City within city limits, with priority being roads and public safety. Revenue shared with Sutter County, which we're addressing tonight, include a Citizens Oversight Committee, which council previously addressed by creating... Adopting a resolution that sets the requirements for that Citizens Oversight Committee. As part of that, Sutter County would agree to no competing or overlapping initiatives, and the measure would be in effect until ended by voters. So, why is general and bold? Because with a general measure, it goes into the general fund. It cannot be identified to go towards specific uses, so that's why we say it'll be used on things such as roads, public safety, homelessness, but we're not identifying specific things. We're not saying that as part of this language, specific amounts. So, council priorities include roads, and so you've all heard this presentation multiple times before, but I'm gonna hit the highlights. Address $150 million in deferred maintenance. Fire operations to maintain critical staffing levels and response times and replace fire station number one. And then police operations, add dedicated homeless response personnel, create a citywide clean team, and then provide police services to the Walton-Happy Park area residents. Also as part of that is a strong desire to support county services that directly affect city residents' safety, and those items are District Attorney's Office, the Sheriff's Department, jail, court bailiffs, and then homeless response efforts. And then at the last meeting of July, council approved this specific language related to Measure D, and, you know, the key word in there is, you know, we talked about city services such as road repairs, increasing police and fire protection, protecting 911 emergency response times, addressing homelessness, and funding other general services and essential activity. That's really key to this being a general sales tax measure. So, this revenue sharing agreement, that's before the City Council, which will subsequently go before the Board of Supervisors, and there's key terms in there. And some of those key terms are, the city seeks to address pressing needs such as roads, police protection, fire services, and response efforts for unhoused persons, among other general fund revenue needs. In order to effectively address cities' pressing needs, it will also require sufficient county services such as prosecutors at the District Attorney's Office, County Sheriff's Department personnel to staff jail facilities and courtrooms, county support to address roadways and infrastructure overlapping in both jurisdictions, homeless response effort, other county services that benefit city residents. Government Code Sections 55700 to 55707 and Section 29 of a portion of the California Constitution authorize counties and cities to enter into agreements to a portion between them the revenue derived from sales or use taxes imposed by them pursuant to the Bradley Burns Uniform Local Sales and Use Tax. If you go back to my first slide, you will note that I said 1% of the current 7.25% is Bradley Burn sales tax that we receive. Under the California Constitution, the City of UBS City is allowed to share a portion of our Bradley Burn sales tax with Sutter County. Therefore, the city proposes to share an equivalent portion of the city's Bradley Burn sales tax with Sutter County, and I'll go into why this is key in just a moment. Sutter County agrees that any payment received shall be used for the purposes of providing general government services, which primarily benefit the residents of UBS City, with a priority on public safety, homeless services, roads, and other services, subject to several restrictions as outlined in Section 4 of the agreement. So, we have quite a few restrictions in Section 4, one of which being that funding cannot be used for Sutter County Fire. So, why is this so important, that language related to Bradley Burns? So, Measure D is for a general tax, and as such, cannot have specific funds allocated. At the July meeting, we had a member of the public in the audience, and their comment was that it sounds like with this tax sharing agreement, you're putting it towards specific uses. Aren't you making a special sales tax by doing so? And so, the reason that I want to call that out is because we're proposing to share an equivalent amount of our Bradley Burn sales tax with the county, and not specifically share revenues received from Measure D if it's successful with the county. So, what does the model look like? In year one, we're... The estimate of what this Measure D could generate is $17.5 million base, of which UBS City would retain 67%. Sutter County would receive 33%. So, if Measure D passes, the revenue comes into the city. The city maintains all of the revenues generated by Measure D, subsequently shares an equivalent portion of our Bradley Burn sales tax with Sutter County. If the amount received is greater than that base amount, then the agreement states that that excess portion will be split 50% directly to UBS City, 50% into a joint projects fund in which there's parameters within the revenue sharing agreement as to how that joint projects fund will be administered and how projects will be added to the list. So, the fiscal impact, if Measure D passes, is estimated to generate $17.5 million in local revenue. The agreement dictates that Sutter County would receive an equivalent share of the city's Bradley Burn sales tax at a rate of 33% of the annual basis amount, leaving 67% for the city. If the actual revenues from Measure D exceed the annual basis, then 50% of the excess funds will be placed into a joint project fund. Alternatives would be to not authorize the execution of a revenue sharing agreement with Sutter County at this time, and the recommendation is to adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a revenue sharing agreement with the County of Sutter. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Diane, what if you could... I just want to clarify for folks who may be listening or watching. Go back one slide, if you may, if you would, where it says Sutter County would receive an equivalent share, but yet we're giving them 33% versus 67. Could you clarify what that means?
So, the... What we've said is that measured of Measure D amount, the 17.5, the base amount, Sutter County would receive 33%, but rather than... They're not gonna receive revenues directly from Measure D. It'll be an equivalent share of our Bradley Burn sales tax. tax that they would receive.
Okay. Hopefully that will help. It can be kind of confusing. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anybody else? Any member of the public care to comment? And were you reaching for your button?
I just had a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
Not a question, because we've already resolved this through all the work that's been done, but there's been the chatter out there as far as how the Sutter County can use the funds, and the perception they would use it for supervisor salaries, benefits, and training. And it is specifically called out in this agreement that they cannot use any money that we share for salaries, trainings, or benefits of the elected supervisors.
All right, very good. Anybody else? Good? There are asked for public comment. I don't see any, and we can do a motion.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Move to adopt the resolution authorizing the mayor to execute revenue sharing agreement with the County of Sutter as written.
First and second to adopt a resolution executing revenue sharing agreement with the County of Sutter. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, passage unanimously, very good. Thank you very much. Moving on to number eight, the 2024 Nogar Kretan Seek Parade. We have some updates, somewhat of an update, and beginning with Police Chief Brian Baker. Welcome, Brian.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Tonight, want to talk real quick about where we're at with the planning of the annual Seek Parade. We are continuing moving forward with that plan. I had a meeting actually this morning with Sheriff Barnes and his staff, so we're moving in a positive direction to make sure this is a safe community event for all parties involved. However, we are still awaiting a couple things from the folks up at the temple. I'll go through my list here so I don't miss anything. One is a traffic plan, a formalized traffic plan, a security plan for their security protocols and what's going to be in place up where the fire department responds for life safety events in the CSAG area. We have no parking plan for up there. We also found out that we're going to be four shuttles less this year for the transfer of folks from River Valley High School up to the temple. There's some food safety issues that environmental health through the county is working on, and there's several other recurring fire code issues that we need to address as far as the tents that they have where they're cooking food and things like that. We are addressing with the FAA a temporary flight restriction. That's going to be resubmitted in the coming weeks with our partners, working with us from the FBI, to get that in place as well, so we don't have low-flying aircraft for a potential hazard there. And with that, I'll entertain any questions any of you may have.
Any questions? Nope. All right. Thank you, chief. Appreciate it. Vice Mayor, you care to make comment?
I'll keep it very brief, Mr. Mayor. It's been a long road. I appreciate the work that you two gentlemen have done thus far. We still got a long road ahead of us, and I'm looking forward to having an event here in the future that we can keep people safe at, so.
All right, very good. I couldn't set it better myself. I know we're moving forward. I definitely appreciate the input and the updates from both our fire chief and police chief, and all the effort and work that you guys have put in, a lot of hours, conversation, trying to keep things going and getting to the point where we can have as a safe event as possible. I know you and I have met, which recently is Friday, with the president of the temple, who had assured us that some of these things mentioned tonight would be done. However, he sent me a text today saying that he is still working on specifically the traffic plan. Some concerns with safety for sure, above and beyond everything else, that we will have to take into consideration. I believe tomorrow is the time that we have to make the decision regarding the permit issuance. That's not to necessarily say that things won't get done by then, however, all we can do is wait for the information to be presented to us and approved as promised and expected. So a lot of work ahead, a lot of work has already occurred, and the hope is just that things become, go down as safely as possible. This is a huge, the biggest event for our community that it is every year, and we want to make sure it goes down and able to accomplish its intent, which is to celebrate their culture and their religion, but to do so in a safe manner as possible. So, being said, we will move on to, unless we have any public comment? Move on to future agenda items. Do we have any future agenda items from council we'd like to address? All right, anything from the public by chance? All right. Going on to reports and communications, beginning with city manager's report.
All right, thank you. So next week, we have the 9/11 memorial at the fire stations. All of the fire stations participate. If any members of the public want to be there, about 7:55. And then we also have a shop talk at Development 101 at Happy Viking at noon. And then that evening is the Cotton Roster statue dedication over in Marysville. Also, September 27th, we are scheduling a mayor's bus tour, so Ashley will be sending out information soon so that people can register for that. And then just really quick follow-up items. A welcome sign RFP was released on August 16th. Bids are due September 9th. We submitted, we've received applications for the Chair Buena Traffic Ad hoc Committee, so staff will be bringing that forward to the ad hoc for them to review the applications. And that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to city council reports, beginning with Councilmember Boom Garden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Attended Regional Housing Authority meeting where we celebrated three, I'll call them graduates of the program there, that have transitioned from a lot of help and into the housing, which is always a good thing. I know Mr. Curlin sits on that committee with me. Those are joyous moments. I'm sure some of you have sat on that, and when these folks actually started with little or nothing and then have climbed their way out of the hole for housing, which is neat. Tended ribbon cutting for the Red Cross. It's all, it's always amazing to me to note that right across the highway from where we sit is this depot that supports the whole area. And by whole area, I mean a lot of Northern California, and it's here in Yuba City. So it's awful, awfully nice to have that just right here. I'd still feel it's important to respond to former Councilman Cardoza's comments. I thought hard about doing this. I'm not sure where he had that public comment. I don't know. Certainly will go back and check. I have the highest regard for Mr. Bob Barkhouse, actually consider him a personal mentor, but I don't remember making promises of naming a park, though of course, he would be worthy of consideration for sure. But just wanted to put that on the record.
I think we had mentioned Veterans Park specifically at one point, but never a park. So I think that may be the confusion. All right, Councilmember Kirchner.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll keep this short. I attended the, the yes, the kickoff on the yes on Prop 36 campaign over in Marysville, the 530 Center, and then I ran across town to join Councilmember Boom Garden and Councilmember Pasquale at the big little game at Marysville Field. And I tell you what, it, during the, during the National Anthem, to see a flock of honkers fly over, right? That, I mean, it just got better after that, and I was, I think we were all dumbstruck. I couldn't get my phone out fast enough because I couldn't believe what was happening. But I'm really glad that they brought that back, and of course, next year will be, it'll be housed in, at Honker Field. We won, by the way. I attended the Red Cross ribbon cutting with Councilmember Boom Garden. Again, great, great event for an amazing organization. 93Q on the radio with the mayor, talking about what's happening in Yuba City. And I'll conclude this by commending our law enforcement folks, our public safety folks that last Sunday night attended or responded to a very dynamic and scary event in our community, and I just wanted to say thank you.
All right, very good. Councilmember Pasquale.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the big little game. I told the referees when they got to the sidelines with me to make sure they kept their flags in their pockets and don't make any bad calls, and he prompted, tried to give you, he tried to give me his flag. I didn't take it, though, but Wade got quite giddy when the honkers went over, I will have to say. That was, that was an omen, but yeah. It was great to have it back. I was in it in 1974, and so it's great for the community, great crowd attended. And with that, I'll complete my report.
Thank you, sir.
All right, very good. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, sir. I'll keep it brief. Only did a couple of things in the last couple of weeks. I went to the Red Cross, and it is good to see the resource. It's actually around the corner from where I live, and I actually spent some time during the park fire in the one up in Reading, so I've seen their work firsthand, and they do a heck of a job. And I want to shout out to the chief in your whole department. What a showing today at the swearing-in ceremony for those four individuals. That entire EOC was packed, standing room only, and a lot of happy people, so kudos to you guys, and congratulations to our, our four newest members of YCPD. So, and with that, I'll turn it back to you.
Very good. Had the opportunity to attend the Beal Military Liaison Dinner out at Peachtree Country Club, supported by Beal Air Force Base, got to meet once again and converse with the new commander out that way, along with a lot of his staff. I got to attend a meeting with the Mong Church there on B Street in Yuba City. Attended a service there, had a tour of their facility, and they were expressed a genuine and emphatic desire to be actively involved in the community, have more kind of a conspicuous presence, invited all of us to stop by and say hi to them, and asked about ways where they could be engaged with us and be out there, which was nice. As Councilmember Kirchner mentioned, we had the opportunity to get on 93Q for the monthly radio address, had a very good conversation with the Fish, and about all things Yuba City. It was very informal, very pleasant, as always, with that organization. I also attended the Red Cross Facility Open House. They went through a recent remodeling and had a quite organized pathway to go through the, their facility there, along with some of their equipment on the outside, and which is very nice refresher as to the services and the quality of services and the historical nature of that organization right here in Yuba City. And I also have a first of hopefully many meetings with an individual, somewhat prominent individual in the community who has expressed a desire to be part of the community group that we're trying to put together in support of the Bike Path facilitation through the UP Right-Away, roughly the UP Right-Away corridor, as the citizens group for a lot of grants, and to say we're going to need a lot of crap money for this project. And not only is it important to get the community involved and see their support, but for grant applications, it's somewhat critical. A key component to that is have community support for your project, and so we're starting that effort. Their task is to come up with a name of the group, a logo for the group, and we're going to have an initial meeting for those who might be interested in participating in that, really a grassroots effort to extend that path from what's going to be around Walmart, and the vision is all the way through to at least Plume and St. Bridge Street. That is that for that. Unless we have anything else, we stand adjourned. Thank you all for being here.